The man behind the camera, let's give it up for my man.
For me, I'll clap for me.
Good to see you, Paul. Good to hear from you. Welcome. We got a lot to talk about. Let's get right to it. Paul, tell us, now you're from Flint, right? Where are you from? Are you from Flint?
Not originally. No, no, no. I was born in Detroit, Michigan. And I did my early years in Detroit. I did my first two years of high school in a small town in Massachusetts called Situate. And then I did my junior and senior year out in Grand Blank, which is a suburb of Flint. And then I headed into Flint and I've been here ever since.
You've been here ever since. And you've got, you've got two boys, I believe?
Well, yeah, yeah, yeah. I've got, I've got, I've got two boys, yeah. Two boys and one wife.
Yeah, can't live with them, can't live without them. I definitely understand.
Yeah, two boys and one wife and they all make me smile.
That's what sucks. How did you get into the Flint City Council meeting? How did you get started recording the meetings?
Man, that's a long, long story.
I know. And a long time ago.
Growing up in Detroit, as a youth, I think I was maybe eight, nine, 10, I got interviewed by Doris Bisco on the Channel 7 News because I built these monster models where other kids were building race cars and and ships and airplanes. I built Dracula and the Wolfman and all this kind of stuff. And I got interviewed by Doris Bisco. And then some years later, I'm guessing I was 11 or 12, I was building model rockets, little Estes model rockets, and she interviewed me again. And she said that I had a knack for it and I, I, I kinda enjoyed it myself, but of course, you know, I'm 12 years old. That didn't happen. But later on, a friend of ours, I hadn't gotten a go-kart for one of my birthdays and we decided that we were going to make a cops and robbers chase scene with this go-kart and an 8mm camera. And we did that and had a bunch of fun and so on and so forth. I ended up at Mott College for a minute in their film school and I did a little animation. I also did a documentary about Creative Expressions Dance Studio. And at that, well, actually that was one of the first things I did. They turned me on to public access here in Flint, probably I'm gonna say early 90s. And that was a system where you could get access to high-end video equipment to produce programming for the local channel 17. Most communities have them. And I got involved with the public access here in Flint. I started with Ken Hannan and Valerie Clark. They had a company called the Kiva Partnership. And I started as their cameraman. And I'm gonna say it was month, maybe two months. They were given the opportunity to go to Poland and do a documentary. So they asked me if I wanted to, uh, no, 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 no. It's about two months in, Dan Kilde was the host of the show. And about two months in, he decided to run for state rep. And at that time, there was a rule that said that you couldn't run for state rep if you were on public ac- you couldn't connect politics with public access. So he had to step down as a host. They asked me if I wanted to host it. So I started hosting this show called Common Ground in early 90s. And then it was, oh, maybe a month after that, that the Kiva Partnership got offered this documentary in Poland. So they asked me if they wanted me to, if I wanted to produce the show. So within less than six months, I went from camera operator volunteer to host to producer to hooked on public access. And that's how I got started. I felt that the city council meetings should have been required by contract to be covered as a part of the public access just contract with the city. Every government meeting should have been made or should be made available. And we're hoping to still do that. We've got some efforts going on right now to revitalize Channel 17 and hopefully people can see the value. There are a lot of people in Flint that aren't connected to the internet. Okay, the last number I got was only 30% of Flint is connected to the internet. But 100% have cable television. You see what I'm saying? Or some type of television. They'll go without the internet. They have TV perhaps.
Wasn't there some issue with like, wasn't there like, I remember one meeting you were, you needed a certain piece of equipment in order to broadcast the meetings on the Channel 77? And I think you were looking for money. So did you ever get that? Was that ever taken?
Well, no, I actually, I have the piece of equipment. It's a matter of, yeah, I'm paying for the equipment. I'm paying for the internet access. We're doing all that through spectacle productions. We are definitely looking for people to help. We, we just started a GoFundMe campaign trying to raise a hundred thousand dollars. I, I mean, I really wanna make this big. I do wanna do every government meeting. And only in Flint, but in Tennessee County. People that come to see the city council meetings here in Flint for whatever reason are also going to be encouraged to participate in their own city councils. You know what I mean? They, they, from the Flint City Council meeting and wanna see if their council is a mess too. So you know what I mean? We might curiously getting some, some government, the goal accomplished.
Let's talk about Eric Mays, you know, cause he's really the, the star of the meeting, okay? As we all know, you know, I, I came in contact with Eric through the, I think it was the night, the frontline video. And it was during COVID. That's when there was no basketball. There was no sports. Everything was shut down, no TV. So I was on YouTube hard, yo. So I came across frontline and I saw the video. I was starting to watch about the water crisis. I remember donating and stuff online and all that other stuff. So I was like, all right, let me watch this. And then as soon as I heard his voice, in my chair, you know, I was like, who's this? And then when he showed his face, I was like, oh, who's this dude? What was your relationship between you and Councilman Mays?
Oh, I have had a wonderful relationship, you know? 30 years, 30 years, yeah. I remember when he was hustling people to the polls in limousines. He would rent a limousine on election day and drive around and pick up old ladies and take them to the polls.
See, that's what I'm, oh, see, that's the Eric Mays I love. You mean to tell me this man rented limousines? And was taking people to the polls in limousines? Wow, that's.
Fabulous stuff, fabulous.
Um, he is the star of the show. What do you, what is your take on Eric Mays?
I, I, you know, it's a double edged sword with Eric Mays. You know, when he's right, he's right. And when he's wrong, he's wrong. But the problem is he, he never has to be wrong. You know what I mean? He chooses to do what he does for whatever reasons he chooses to do that. But like I said, when he's right, he's right. And when he's wrong, he's wrong. And you really never have to be that wrong.
Right. I don't think he has an issue with that. He has admitted, you know, certain, in certain meetings where he was wrong on a certain motion or a certain rule, he's admitted to it.
But he's taking it back immediately after he's admitted, is it, you know what I mean? I'm sorry, but negates everything you say. You see what I'm saying? I'm sorry, but you shouldn't have called me out. I'm sorry, but you guys are messing up. I'm sorry, but and that just cancels out whatever you said before. One city council meetings are designed for debate. The only thing that's supposed to happen at a city council meeting is I'm supposed to be able to convince you to vote the way I'm voting. And then we vote. You see what I'm saying? All the other work is supposed to take place before the council meetings. This is not a place to talk about this, that, and the other thing. You discuss the issues. Actually, the bottom line is, is you're supposed to go to the budget. And you're supposed to look up the line item. If the mayor comes up with a proposal and says he wants to buy six purple garbage trucks. The council's supposed to go to the budget and look up garbage trucks and see if there's enough money for six. And if there is, the council's supposed to say yes. If there isn't, they're supposed to say no. That's how easy it's supposed to be. Okay? That's how simple it's supposed to be. Their biggest power comes during the budgeting process. And the budgeting process, it is their relationship with the mayor's office and administration that gets them into the proposed budget. We are on the same boat. So if the captain is steering this way and the crew is steering that way, we ain't gonna get nowhere.
Well, see, here's the, here's the issue. It's only one person steering and that's the mayor. The mayor runs the day-to-day actions.
No, the only one steering is the budget. The only one steering is the budget and it's the budget that they approved. That's what steers the boat. Okay?
Look, I, well, you know, that's, that's, you know, that's another conversation, you know, but you know, my focus on you was really the, you know, behind the scenes. Cause you're telling the story and it's good to know your, your point of view because you're telling us the story. You know, the way you move the cameras, you know, that stuff is really important. And that's what kinda brought me into these videos, the way that you would, you know, move the cameras. Now let's talk about that.
And it was, it was real easy. I mean, it was limited. I had two automated cameras and I could pre-program each of the nine positions. So it was relatively easy to get that to move and you know, the, the goal is always not have you see the camera move. Right? But when you only have one camera.
In the old chambers, how many cameras did you have?
In the old camera, there was only, unless I hooked up a third camera, there were two. One facing the audience, one facing the, um.
There were, I think cameras were mounted. These cameras were mounted, like on the ceiling. So that, and you could switch. I know you had like a control room back there. So, you know, did they, what happened to that? How's that not like, like, why can't you do that now?
Well, they revamped the chamber. They, they remodeled. All that stuff was 30, 40 years old. That was 70s technology in there. Okay? Their core was 70s. I brought in everything that connected to their cameras. You know, I bypassed all that 70s stuff with Apple computers and HDMI converters and audio boards and all that kinda stuff. So, you know, we had been bypassing that for quite some time. But during their remodel, they decided, well, I was told that the broadcasting of the council meetings is not a part of the charter. And it is therefore not the responsibility of the city clerk to do it. And therefore that they were gonna cease doing it.
Weren't you under a contract though with the city? Didn't they put you into a contract or something? And then?
Yeah.
And they stopped. And so when they ceased it, they did not renew your contract.
Correct. Dude, I've been here for 30 years. And I, it is ebbed and flowed the whole. I did nine years before I got one check from the city of Flint. So you know, I, I started this as a volunteer and if I have to end it as a volunteer, so be it. I'm, I'm hoping that the community will step up and see the value here. You know what I mean?
That was another question. You know, you've got, I'm sure you monitor viewership. Do you see a lot of residents watching your videos or is a lot of out-of-towners watching your videos? Do you know?
I see a lot of out-of-towners commenting on the videos, which is always interesting. You know, I haven't really done the analytics for, uh, you know, I'm more curious if I get somebody from Saudi Arabia or Baghdad or something. I just went through.
Oh, they're there.
And did something in the, in the studio where I was able to add translations. And I just started adding all these languages. So I'm like, ah, let's see what this does. So now I'm translating into Chinese and and Pakistani and all this kinda stuff. So we're gonna see what happens.
And you're in the audience now. You're not in the control room in that back room yelling out.
I, I am in my car downstairs.
Well, we're gonna get to that. You set up in the car. When you were there, how the?
It's horrible. It's horrible. It's painful. You can, the, the, the hatred and the anger is palpable.
From who?
The audience, from the council, from almost everybody in there. There's just, I mean, people are waiting to get beat up or people are waiting to beat up people. But it's just, it, it, it's, it hurts my spirit. I'm a happy-go-lucky guy. And the longer I stay in there, the more I wanna yell out.
So that's why you set up, go live, then go to your car?
I leave, yeah.
You leave and then you go to your car? And then you control and do everything?
Everything that I can from the car.
From your car. Wow. Because there's certain people in the audience, whether they're attacking you or, and?
No, not necessarily. It's just, it's not a comfortable place. This is, this is a chamber. This is a government chamber and it should be treated like a courtroom. Like a courtroom. You shouldn't yell out, you shouldn't yell out from the audience. It should not be tolerated. You hear me? You gotta, I mean, this is not church and this is not a movie theater. Get Amens and Hail Marys and claps. And hell, they were singing the other night.
Compared to 17, 18, 19, those days in those chambers, the audience, you see a difference compared to 2023?
Of course. Yeah. One, the fact that we have five wards and 80,000 people is ridiculous. Nine wards, right? We had nine wards when we had 200,000 residents. We still got nine wards and we're down to 80 to 100,000 people. Make that make sense. The bottom line, the whole way the city council is designed is to make it divisive. Why do we have wards? It's the same boat. Until we realize we're on the same boat and what's good for the north side and, and ward one is good for ward two, three, four, or six or seven or somebody else. It's all good when we, what? A high tide raises all boats? We need to have a high tide in Flint. We need to stop being this petty ward stuff. We're all on the same boat. We're all on the same boat.
This is the worst council. Would you agree compared to the past two? Or would you say this is in between?
I'm gonna say that this is the council that has made the least amount of valuable motions.
Yeah, I would agree. Do you think he's gonna say, you know what? I think I've highlighted this enough. You know, I've highlighted it enough. You know, we need to, we need to find a way to get together and work together. Do you think that's ever gonna happen?
It may, but it's a challenge for him to solve because nobody else can solve it. Nobody else can make Eric do anything. And Eric, I believe, is going to do what he believes is in his best interest, interest and/or the best interest of the issue or, um, political mood he's involved with.
Right. And I should be calling him Councilman Mays. I'm calling him like I know him personally, but out of respect, I should be referring to him as Councilman Mays. I hope.
I like grand poobah. I like potentate too. So you can add that to the lift your light.
He's a stickler for rules and regulations, but Eric, right for that meeting, when it was Quincy, Judy, Burns, Herconroter, Pfeiffer.
Jerry, this is mob, this is a mob, man, Tyler. Y'all just sharing yourself. Three white folks and a handkerchief big negro. Don't call that life. I ain't scared of you.
Mr. Mays.
Y'all don't know what steps you by.
Five minutes, yes.
You go, you go, you go with the.
You're a handkerchief big.
You go, boy, for real.
You're a handkerchief big negro.
And I felt it. I remember, cause I worked from home. And when he said that, I felt it. I was like, damn. You didn't even see Burns. All you saw was all them white folks in Quincy. Do you know, do you remember the meeting that I'm talking about? And if you do?
You know, it's happened so many times, my brother. You wouldn't have to pick a particular meeting. You'd blend together. Uh, you know, sensationalism is sensationalism. And it has its place. I don't think it has its place in, well, I guess it does. I mean, it's a different day when it comes to politics. You know, it's all about politricks. And the bottom line is, you know what the definition of a politician is, right? Poly, poly means many, right? And you know what ticks us off? Okay. What I hate is, is that the, the political system requires our council people to be politicians to get elected, right? They have to, they have to play the political game to get elected. But what we expect from them, once they get elected, is to become public servants. Okay? So we know you gotta play that stupid yard sign game and, and the debate game and all that kinda stuff to get into your position. But once you're in that position, we need you to convert to a public servant. We know in four years, you're gonna have to go back into politics mode. We know that. But give us three, three good years of public service before you ask for our vote again.
You know, you talk about that and, and then, and I brought that story up because I'm against him using that phrase that handkerchief had, you know, I'm, I'm against that personally. I've got a few.
Oh, every time he does it, like.
Oh, yeah, I do. I cringe a little. I know a few, I know a few mulattoes and, you know, that have history. You know, of them, of their grandparents and their great-grandparents being called that. So, you know, I think it's a, you know, I, I don't think it should be, you know, out there in 2023, in my opinion. So there was a meeting where you were clapping.
They heard me for two minutes. Thank you, Mr. Mays.
Why is God doing that?
Why were you doing that? What was that about? What's up? Was that even necessary?
It was in my heart. And again, it, it's, it is the environment. It is the room. It is the vibe. It really is. Because that's kinda out of character for me, but he had done such a great performance that I felt it deserved a standing ovation. And that's what I did. I mean, it was, it was a good show. It really was.
You know, what was going through your mind when that was going on between you and Eric Mays in front of the camera?
Well, I, I, I know the type. And I know how to trigger the type. And I know how to engage with the type. And I know how to not engage with the type. And the key is the last one.
You don't think you were engaging?
No, 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 not as much as I could have. Certainly not as much as I could have. I sat there and I let him go off on me. I think I gave him a couple kisses and, you know, uh, like I said, I know how to deal with the type.
What meeting stands out in your head?
All of them are horrible. So there's not one that stands out any more or less. Anytime you spend four hours on point of orders and appeals to the chair and not voting or trying to convince your constituents that, you know, hey, this thing for this park is a good idea. I got 67 people that called me and I really would appreciate your support on this. It's useless. It's wasted.
And you know, there was a lot of pressure put on Ali Herconroter to bring the council together. But my issue was that is if you're gonna bring everybody together, you gotta, everybody has gotta want to be together.
These are grown people. These are grown folks, man. These are grown people.
You got some people that don't want to, don't care.
You can't make anybody do anything. Now you could make them wish they had. But you can't make anybody. To ask the president to bring those people to, the, the things they've said publicly to and about each other could be eliminated by some apologies. Some sincere apologies without butts after them.
What was your, your experience with Kate Fields on council?
I've worked with Kate Fields since the, since the early, was it 80s? Kate Fields hired me in the 80s. She got a grant to do energy conservation or something in the city of Flint. They were changing light bulbs to LEDs or something like that. And she got this, this grant and she hired me to videotape a couple of her meetings back in the day. So I met her through that. Uh, and then she went on to become a, a councilperson and she had her issues. You know what I mean? And I can say that I like Kate. I, I, you know, bottom line is I like them all. I don't have time to, to, I, I don't have time to hate. The bottom line is it takes up too much energy.
Did you enjoy working with Count Herbert Winfrey? Some said, he was, some said he was a little relaxed on Mays during those meetings. Did you find it so?
Herb was laid back. Herb, I'm, I'm, I, I make pumpkin seeds. Every Halloween, I go, matter of fact, Quincy went out one time with me. There was a farm out in the pier here. And two, three days after Halloween, we'd go out to the farm and we'd buy the pumpkins and he'd be selling the pumpkins for 25 cents apiece. And I'd buy 100, 150 pumpkins, throw them in the back of the truck and then we'd come home and cut them up and make pumpkin seeds. Well, I think I got that council hooked on pumpkin seeds. And Herb, I think, got the worst of it. Herb, Herb, Herb called me up after he left the council wanting some pumpkin seeds. Or something in elevator or something like that.
How's he doing now? Have you heard from him? How's he doing?
Have not, have not heard from him at all. Have not heard from many. I, I, I see Maurice every once in a while. He used to do his radio show on WFOV, the 92.1. So after he stopped doing that, um, yeah, where's last, oh, oh, Kevin Collins does a jazz night over at the Flint Development Center. And Maurice stopped by there one night.
Were there any days where you felt like, you know what, is it worth it, you know, um, doing the YouTube? You know, airing it out to the public? Did you feel like, you know, you're maybe adding to the embarrassment? Did I have a question in mind?
All right. So I, I, I was gonna try not to use this analogy, but I'm gonna use it. Okay? I heard this story about the guy who invented the rape whistle. Okay? His daughter had been raped.
Oh, yeah. You, you just had a meeting before. Yeah, I remember.
And he thought of, you know, a way to help prevent rape were these rape whistles. And they worked. So now he's producing these whistles to help people not get raped. But at the same time, he's dependent on people raping to sell his whistles. So my goal was, and, and, and one of the sayings I had was the only way to keep a politician honest is to watch them. And that's why I started broadcasting as many government meetings as I did. Okay?
Got it.
There are only 20 people, five people, 10 people, 50 people in the audience at a given time. However, I got 8,000 subscribers. We've got six, 700 people via me watching this. Let alone the others that have started streaming them as well. We can't count that at all. But yeah, I, I, I feel responsible for it and, and I gotta take responsibility for it. And sometimes I just wanna cut it off. I think, I think, I think they need to go back into the council, into the committee rooms. It's a different, it's a different vibe in the committee room and it doesn't feel like a council meeting and, and it's, it's more intimate and I, I think that would help.
Those meetings in those committee rooms hit different than it did in those council chambers. Just like what you just said. They were intimate. The councils were intimate. They were around a table. They were in a loop. They were working together, you know, and that was.
They said they were working together, but they weren't intimate.
So, or they could, you know, they're in a position to work together. So, so, you know, and I know it was evil wording because she put the motion to put all the meetings out in the chambers. I remember that meeting. And they all voted on that. And then after that.
I think there was something wrong with the room. I think there was something wrong with the, or they felt confined in the room with the, the way that the hostility was going.
Yeah, 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 yeah. So, but those committee rooms, I mean, I'm telling you, those walls can talk, man. Stories that they could tell. So the water's safe in Flint.
Listen, I'm from the school, we had 200,000 people living off the Flint River. 200,000 people living off the Flint River. We're 80,000 now. If we'd have spent the millions on a high-quality water treatment system, we could be on the Flint River right now. But instead we got in bed with these other folks and these other folks and now we're part of this thirty year deal and. We had our own. We owned our own. And we went from owning our own to, to being renters again, which is just ridiculous.
With, with Saint John's. It's a lot of history behind Saint John's, man.
Oh, the, the neighborhood of Saint John's was before my time. That's a, that's a fifty-sixties thing in Saint John's. When they came in here. And they destroyed Saint John's with the expressway. It was done on purpose. You talk about the original gentrification and, 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 and destroying American community. Um, that was by design. And they did that all over the country. We weren't the only person that, we weren't the only place that experienced.
Um, this last meeting. There was supposed to be a vote to suspend Mays and censor JWC. Um, that meeting adjourned. Cause there was no quorum. And so they did not vote on that. So do you think that's gonna come up in the near future? Do you know?
It's gonna have, it, it, it's gonna have to. It's either gonna have to be voted up or voted down. So it's gonna have to come back up.
Got it. Okay. That's what I wanted to ask you. Yeah, that's, that's, that's why I wanted to ask you. Yeah, because what did you think? What was, what did you say to yourself when she said that? Cause normally JWC is quiet, right? She doesn't really say much.
Are you talking about Tanya's century or I don't remember Jerry getting the century?
She was supposed to, yeah. There was a motion on there. I believe it was on the agenda to.
I thought that was for Tanya. I thought that was Ta- I know Tanya got a, well, she did get one. So that, the, the one, the other night was for Jerry.
I think it's related to that. So council, they get their own parking spaces too?
Yeah, they get their own parking spaces. It's classy.
I was surprised when she said that. I was surprised.
You know. You know, you know, my, my employers have always told me that you praise in public. And you punish in private. There is nothing that can be accomplished by chastising somebody publicly. Because you've, you, you're embarrassing them. And now in order for them to save face, they either gotta come back at you. Or, and protect themselves in some kind of way or say nothing and either validate or not validate, you know. What you said. So you're stuck between a rock and a hard place. Couple of months ago, guy came full Kevlar, head to toe. Scared the shit out of me. What do you know that I don't know? What do you know that I don't know that you feel you gotta be here in full body armor? If you gotta be here in full body armor, guess what? I don't need to be here.
So what happened with that? Cause I know the judge ruled that they can't do a gun free zone, so.
Believe that? In his gun free zone? In his gun free zone, he ruled that we couldn't feel as safe as he does. I don't get it.
I mean, I.
A municipal building and a school and a church and all those guys should be able to exempt themselves from that. If you feel you need to bring a gun to city hall, stay your ass at home.
And like, what if that happens? You know, do you still record? Do you shut down? What are the protocols behind that? If something?
I sit in my car and hope no bullets hit my cameras. And hope to put TMZ on speed dial. What am I gonna do?
You would think now that these meetings are highlighted all over the world, they would be more security. And I know Neely put in the. The metal detectors, but you know. And how come Metcalf is only by himself? You know, why aren't they more?
Self, there are the police there. And that's a shame that we, we tie up three police officers, four police officers at a city council meeting.
Yeah, taking them off the streets.
You know, my, they, 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 they had to quadruple my budget. This disorderly conduct, whether Liddell Lewis says it, or Judy Priestley, or Eric Mays. They don't need the council to tell them how to enforce the law. Now, what they do need the council for is to tell them who's broken the rules. You know what I mean? If that's not in their bailiwick, they might not know what all the rules are, but they know what the law is. And if you start threatening somebody with violence, that's against the law. And they can act cor- they can act accordingly.
You're recording the meetings, like. Why are there so many errors with, like, I wanna give you a chance to defend yourself as far as the, the audio. The, you know, sometimes you gotta go to, you gotta stop the live, then you gotta go to another live, and then you gotta stop that live. And then you end up with four, four parts. Why is that?
You know, there's a couple of ways that that happens. Early on, I had been unplugged. By folks, you know, I bring my own internet down there. I bring my own T-Mobile hotspot.
People were purposely unplugging your stuff?
Unplugging my modem. So I'd be down in the car and, you know, about six thirty, seven thirty, boom, 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 it'd go out. Then there was another thing that was a, uh, data cap. From T-Mobile. So after the six hour mark, they would drop me. And I would have to reconnect and that would cause a problem. Got that fixed with, uh, a boost in, 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 in my service and my plan. Then the other thing was, uh, my battery chargers. I have devices that are plugged into a power strip. I'm plugged into the wall, but I'm plugged into a power strip with. Uh, charging, with chargers. And sometimes they don't charge as fast as the devices use the power. So I'll have eight cameras plugged in. And it's slowly going down to zero. So I have to keep two cameras on reserve. So when I lose all my cameras, I can pump them back in. Now, as far as the audio is concerned, um, I need three wires. I need them to give me three wires. And I can create what's known as a mop box. And that will allow. The networks and everybody to get a clean audio feed. I'm always optimistic. You know, Flint is a great place to make better. And as long as everybody else sees that and, 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 and gets with the program, Flint can be a great place. We're so small. We're so small. We're, you know, it's a family. We're eighty thousand. You know what I mean? We know each other. We know, everybody knows somebody who knows somebody.
Um, I'm sure you're gonna be doing a lot more videos. Is there anything you wanna leave us off with?
I'm about to mash your shit up again. I got you in my editor right now. I'm about to throw down, do some stuff. Will you quit putting your logo way up? Put your logo in the corner so I'm covered up easy, damn.
You know, I don't think anyone is giving you any credit for it, but I try to make sure I have, you know, and.
Pay me. I don't need credit. I need money. Send me cash.
I sent you that as well, you know, I sent you some cash as well, but I wanted, but, but I also.
You know, the comments are, are, are pretty brutal. And I'd rather, I mean, the people in the comments know that the council people read the comments. So where'd you talking sense in the comments? Please mister, do this, or please misses, stop doing that, you know, they're, they're doing what they're doing. Hundred percent. Bottom line is the council meeting is to vote and debate. There is no valuable debate happening at our council meetings. I'd be watching Netflix too.
And I want the subscribers, the viewers to know the music in the beginning of the, the, uh, compilations. Are from the meetings. And so, um, when, back when. During COVID, the meetings were remote, um, and the council members were going to executive session. You know, Paul would play WFOV. So, um, where did you get these music? Where did you get this music from? Where did you get these?
So I'm, I'm a general manager of a low-power FM radio station that, uh, Flint Odyssey House hosts a license to. It's WFOV ninety-two point one LP FM Flint. And again, I had a captive audience. And instead of just sitting there with nothing, I figured I could pipe in the radio station. And oftentimes, sometimes there are talk shows going on at the radio station when, uh, when the meeting would come up and we'd play those as well. You know, it was just filler. And those are local guys. That's a, a group called Unique. Yeah, who later changed their name to Legacy. And the great story about that is two of the members of that are now currently spinners. So they're sitting with the spinners. We got Jesse Peck and Marvin Taylor. Uh, are now spinners and they started with that group there. That was Joshua Parker, uh, doing the, um, the, 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 uh. The solo.
But look, man, I hope they continue to let you record. Thank you for the, do you think they're gonna let, still let live video stream out of that council chamber?
I'm hoping, I'm hoping that we get this public access thing up and going. Because what I will charge the public access system with is recording every government meeting in the city of Flint. I wanna hire anybody that wants to operate a camera. To go out and do the Schwartz Creek meetings, to do the Fenton meetings, to do the Goodrich meetings, to, or if it's in Genesee County. We should be able to have access to it. Now, a lot of these places may already do it.
But you, in order to do that, you gotta get your contract renewed, right?
Cause the public access would be a different contract. Public access would be a management contract for spectacle productions to manage the public access.
I'm sure we'll see each other on YouTube. And, um, like I said, it was a pleasure. Thank you for sitting down with me, man. Chopping it up. Is there anything else?
Not a damn thing. Look for my next AK Cole mashup.
Paul's been real, man. It's been real chopping it up with you. This is my first video, so it's a little, you know, it's the first one, but I'm sure we're gonna do more, hopefully. Well, anyway, thank you for your support. Thank you for the videos. Thank you for the Flint City Council. Thank you to all my subscribers. Thank you to everybody tuning in.
So YouTube has invited us to participate in the sponsorship program. So they are, have set up, uh, some kind of system to allow you guys to support the channel. Uh, there should be a button down here somewhere. Join, support, sponsor. Click it. See what it says.